And then we'll be right with you. You are a super.
We'll also know that.
Go get a puppy, my friend.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. In the worst.
What works out? For the. Uh. Ready?
All right.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the planning commission Tuesday, September 23rd. The meeting is called the order. Margaret, please take your calls.
Good evening. Commissioner Rondo Alvarez. Do you ever need? Listen. Commissioner Haverman.
Here.
Commissioner Sade.
Here.
Can I, excuse me, Commissioner Rodby.
Here.
Commissioner Summers.
Here.
Chair Mercado.
Present.
We have a unanimous full attendance. Chair.
Awesome. Thank you. And welcome to our new commissioner. Your first meeting, right? Awesome. Glad, glad to have you. All right. Order the agenda. Are there any commissioners that want to request a change to the order of the agenda? I assume not. Okay, next we'll move to our meeting procedures. City of San Rafael remains committed for all to participate in our public meetings. I want to welcome everyone that's here. Margaret, can you please tell the public how comment will work this evening?
Absolutely. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live on YouTube. Viewers can also watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda or by dialing six, six, nine, four, 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 nine, one, seven, one, and entering the meeting ID, which is eight, three, six, five, one, zero, four, nine, zero, three, four, pound. We are offering closed captioning for this evening Zoom meeting, this evening's meeting on Zoom. Select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. If you're having any difficult, technical difficulties doing any of this, please contact me and I have my computer right here at margaret.cavanaugh-lynch@cityofsanrafel.org and I will step in and try to assist. In order to provide oral testimony, speakers must be present. Displayed on the podium is a timer to help you stay within your allotted timeframe. You are invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in or if you reside from outside the city. If you'd like to request accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act to provide public comment virtually, please submit your quest to margaretcavanaugh@cityofsanrafel.org at least 72 hours in advance for consideration.
Great, thank you. All right, next oral communications from the public. These are for non-agenda items. If you're here for those items, come on down. Please note these remarks are for items that will be heard or anything on the agenda will be heard at the time of the item. Care for the item on the agenda, I assume? Yep, great. Okie doke. Next is consent calendar. There's no items on the consent calendar. So we will move to action items. The action item for this evening is a major environmental and design review permit and conditional use permit to expand the existing mini storage facility located at 990 Anderson Drive. And we'll have a staff report, please.
Thank you, commissioners. The proposed project, as noted, is located at 990 Anderson. Jimin's good. There we go. The project site's located in southeast San Rafael and is located on a project site of 145,000 square feet. The zoning district is light industrial office and the general plan designation is community commercial mixed use. The existing site, as mentioned, 3.27 acres. It's located on the southwest side of Anderson Drive near the intersection with Jacoby and the primary frontage is on Anderson and it's adjacent to Highway 101 as well as Interstate 580. The existing site is developed with four buildings. Building A is the two largest ones where the primary one-story structures currently that are where the primary addition is going to be for the project. There is a small second story that's used for office space. Buildings B and C are one-story as well. The existing mini storage use and the buildings were approved by the planning commission in 1975 and the current access is through automatic gates with keypads at the entrances. Here's an existing site plan. Some photos of the site looking from Anderson. The proposed project includes the construction of a full second story over building A. The second story would bridge the space between the two buildings and would add a total of 68,000 square feet of new self-storage space for a total of an additional 525 new units. Overall, after the building is constructed, this facility would be 140,000 square feet and have 1,400 self-storage units. The maximum height would be 33 feet, eight inches. And one of the key issues here that to discuss is the floor area ratio. The proposed floor area ratio would be 0.98, which is greater than what is permitted by the general plan. Here's a rendering of the project. And the proposed site plan showing that second story bridging building A. We have elevations from the north on Anderson. South. East. And west. The major environmental design review is required because the project includes in addition to a non-residential structure greater than 40% and a conditional use permit is required to accommodate the increase in FAR up to 1.0. A little example of how we calculate floor area ratio. It's one of the metrics, objective metrics that we use in the planning world and it's a ratio of the building area to the land area. In the example here, we have a two-story building with a 2,500 square feet of habitable space on a 5,000 square foot lot, which gives us a FAR of 0.5. As noted earlier, the, I think that was the wrong general plan. General industrial, which permits the storage and warehouse facility with an overall maximum FAR of 0.33 and the design would be compatible with the existing building on the site and surrounding buildings. And the policy that is triggering the need for the use permit is policy LEU 2.11, which permits this addition up to a FAR of 1.0 and the criteria include if the facility is needed by the community, the design is compatible with surrounding uses, the project's designed so it can't be converted to other more intensive uses and that the location is appropriate for this type of use. In general, the project is, and as conditioned, the project's consistent with the general plan and the second story addition doesn't exceed the height limits. The light fixtures would be downward facing and conditions of approval would ensure compliance with the all standards in the zoning code. The project went through a sequel process. There's an attachment to the staff report and the city procured a Class 32 report prepared by an independent third party, which found that the project does qualify for the Class 32 exemption. And just a few highlights for the conditions of approval. Ensure compliance with the building code, fire code and Department of Public Works. I had a question earlier in the week from a commissioner about the special flood hazard area and that will be analyzed during the building permit process when we have the architectural details at that level of specificity. And staff's recommendation to the planning commission is to convene the hearing and take testimony. Staff recommends adopting the resolution for the major environmental design review and use permit subject to findings and conditions of approval. Available for questions.
Thank you. All right, bring it back. Commissioners, any questions to staff? I'll open it up.
I just thought of this when I was here. If the project requires any modification for flood zone and the height needs to be increased, is there a way to allow for that through staff without having to come back here?
Sure.
Quick question on the landscaping deficiency. Why is that? Is that because when it was originally built, there wasn't a 10% requirement or? Do you know?
Let me, Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch, planning manager, let me take the questions in order. No, 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 totally fine. I, so if this project has to do some kind of construction modification in its building plans due to the flood zone, there is something in the municipal code that allows for substantial compliance with the approved plans. So that does give the director a significant amount of discretion in terms of what that could mean. Obviously, if it appears, if most, if the project is substantially the same, but they had to move it six inches, that would be a building permit, you know, straight through. If there was, oh, it turns out some federal agency issues a new flood map and we need to do something very different, that may put the decision in peril if the commission does choose to approve it. Things that are not substantially compliant would need to likely come back to the body of decision. But it's, we have a fair amount of leeway to make this as reasonable as possible without losing the approval of the commission's intent.
And I'll just note that the maximum height for the zoning district is 36 feet.
So to the landscape plans, I do think that, Christina, you might have more on that. Do you have thoughts about that? Or do you want me to start? Okay, so while Christina Estidio, our principal planner, is looking into the staff report more, I do think the landscape requirement has, it may have modified a little over the years. I don't think we've gone back to prior codes to see what the exact requirement was unless Ms. Estidio finds it. But generally speaking, we ask applicants to look at it when our landscaping addition is triggered, but we're trying to strike the balance between letting them make reasonable use of the property. And in this case, with all the vehicular traffic, the architecture itself is improving, the overall location or the aesthetic of the site is improving. So while we are always looking for our landscaping, we're always looking for our plants, we try to balance it with what the goal of the project is. So it's, as we try to do in this project.
And my understanding is that the project is solely a second story. So the amount of landscaping on the ground isn't being affected.
Other questions? Did you get your answer? You think? Okay. Likewise? Okay. All right, we'll open the public hearing and if there's an applicant presentation, come on down. If there's not, that's fine too. We can maybe. Thanks. Why don't you come on down and we'll see if there's any questions from the planning commission?
Recording stopped.
I got one.
Recording in progress.
We need a timeout or we good? We're good. All right. We'll assume we're good. Thank you for coming down. All right. Just in case there were questions, we can be on the mic for folks that are listening.
My name's Evan Lavand on behalf of the applicant. Happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, so commissioners, any questions? We've got. Is anybody here? No? I hope you make your, get your steps for the day. I guess that's it.
Yeah.
All right.
And to your, Ms. Rodby, your question earlier, there is, the site basically is fully covered already. If we could add additional landscaping at the level, there is landscaping both in front of the property and in back on Jacoby. If there was additional room to add landscaping, we would. But it's really the street level, the ground floor essentially is entirely developed already. Anyway, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I actually drove by it and it looks very, I mean, it's all neat and clean. I just, it's my district and I just, Anderson Drive is, as you know, a backdoor exit and entrance into San Rafael. There's a lot of people that use it. So I just think, coming from an industrial background, that it's important to have our commercial industrial zones look as good as they can.
We've actually done some, made some landscaping changes over the course of the last couple of years, adding some just new landscaping, some elements along Anderson. So anyway, hope you like the way it looks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll formally open it for the public as well, in case there is any public comments. We can say we did. I assume not. So we'll close the public comment and we'll bring it back. We'll let commissioners deliberate if they'd like, provide any comments. Anybody want to kick it off, have any input? We will not put our new commissioner on the first spot. You can kind of see how we chat. Sure, whatever we want.
I'd like to motion to follow the recommendations in the staff report, the three bullet points for approval.
Through the chair, just to make sure the staff understands, the Commissioner Sade is making a motion to approve the project as recorded in the draft resolution attached in the packet. Is that correct?
Oh, correct. I was, I got it mixed up.
It's been several months since we brought you here, so it's on us.
Thinking of the conditions of approval, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for correcting that.
I second. Sure, Rodby.
Great. So we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as provided in the packet attached to tonight's agenda. Any comment before? Otherwise, we will move to vote. I think we'll take a roll call. Let's do it.
Commissioner Alvarez.
And my vote is, hey, approval.
Commissioner Haverman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodby.
Yes.
Commissioner Sade.
Yes.
Commissioner Summers.
Yes.
Chair Mercado.
Yes.
Project is approved unanimously.
Great. Thanks for coming down. Appreciate it. All right, so we'll close that item out and we will move to director's report if you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say that there are a number of major projects that will be coming to the planning commission, I believe, this fall. I want to say that. And I, I hope you all had a very good summer and we've missed you. And we are also going to be working on a number of advanced planning projects. So I will be here with my colleagues and we'll be talking about zoning code modifications and some general plan modifications. We have some really cool things to do with our safety element to align with some fire local hazard mitigation plans. So we have a full plate coming. I know it seems like it's been really quiet. It's because we're working really quietly behind the scenes, but I promise it's going to be an interesting fall and winter. So thank you so much for your patience. It's really nice to see you all. Welcome to the new commissioner.
Thank you.
And thank you all for your patience over the summer.
Yeah, I don't think we're, yeah, that's fine. Appreciate you doing what you do. All right, so it's director's report. Now bring it to the commissioners. Any commissioner communications, juicy gossip, updates, cheese meh? What do we got? Nothing to report? Nothing new? Okay. Then I will adjourn the meeting. Thanks.